Okay, this is a special meeting of the Waco Independent School Board. It's hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Just really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to the reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. I just lost my place, one second. Okay, we are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. I just ask if you would please turn your cellphones to silent if you have not already done so. We really do appreciate the time you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent Schools District. Este junta regular de Waco esta convocada. Los extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes. Los que no se observan por televisión también los quiero compartir con todas sus conferencias. Están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma. Así toda la información que fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor, apagar su teléfono seglar. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. Ms. Charles, are there any public? No? Okay, no public comments. We'll move on to item three in just one second. I'm going to read our Board Ethics. This is Honor and Conduct. As Board members, we will tell the truth. We will share our views while working for consensus. We will respect the majority decision as the decision of the Board, and we will base our decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Item number three, review, discuss the proposed budget and tax rate for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Ms. Cheryl Davis. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a budget. Not a great one, but we have a budget. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about, look at the overview of the budget, and we'll talk a little bit about the legal requirements, look at what our final certified values turned out to be, what our PMS enrollment, average daily attendance turned out to be, and how that kind of impacted us for the current year. I am not changing from what I told you in June. We'll look at that a little bit, but, so, I'm even more conservative now than I was when I told you in June. Then, again, we'll look at those, the general fund budgets, and then the other adopted budgets that you guys are required to adopt every year. So, first, looking at our legal requirements, why we're doing this right now. So, the budgets must be developed in accordance with our generally accepted accounting principles. Doesn't mean anything to maybe accept our accountants or business people in the room. For districts with a September 1st through August 31st fiscal year, the proposed budget must be presented to you guys by August 20th of the year. And then we must have a public hearing prior to adopting the budget and tax rate, and we have to have a minimum of 10 days' notice, which is why we're trying to get it in, so we have plenty of time before the 24th to get that notice in the paper that will be published. It's been a little more challenging with the TRIB reducing the days that they're publishing, so we had to, the timelines were a little trickier this year. And then, the budget must be adopted by August 31st, because if you don't know it, the budget has a legal, it is your legal authority to expend funds without a budget. You legal, you are illegal if you're spending money, so we have to have that done by August 31st before we can do payroll or anything else. So, and the last day to adopt a tax rate is September 30th, or 60 days after we get the certified roll. And the budget has to be adopted prior to the tax rate. I think that is, they don't want you to adopt a low tax rate and then adopt a budget that is higher, so that's part of the legal requirements. Looking a little bit at the budgets that we have to adopt, there are three budgets. There are fiscal fund budgets that must be part of the official budget. That is our general fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition services fund. We have some other special revenue fund budgets that you all adopt as a Board, because we are the fiscal agents for these funds. That would be the, first is the Greater Waco Advanced Academies, the Tuama and Guaca, and the McLennan County Challenge Academy, and the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf. All three of those, we do generate funds in those budgets from other districts, but Waco ISD is the fiscal agent. They will have their, I have the Challenge Academy meeting at 8:00 tomorrow morning, so they can adopt the budget after we do ours tonight. So, the factors that influence the budget process, of course, we've talked a lot about it, we'll talk a little bit more about it, student enrollment and attendance, probably the biggest factor in how we get our revenue, our property values, tax rates, and the collections. State legislation, not much of a positive impact this year with state legislation. You will see a bigger deficit than we originally planned because of state legislation. And then, any available federal funding, as we know, the ESAR funds, we're going into our last year of ESAR funds, so after this year, we're gonna have to make some decisions about, or during this year, we'll have to make some decisions. Then, of course, recruitment and retention, part of why we give our salary increases, so we can recruit and retain competent, quality employees. And then inflation, we've got a lot of that this year, especially in our utilities and some of our tax collection, property insurance, we've had a lot of increases in those areas. So, in our budget goals, as we're adopting the budget, we try to, first of all, preserve the quality of our instruction or other services. Our program safety has been a bigger priority than ever the last few years, so that's, again, as we talked about at the last Board meeting, there is, you're gonna see some negative impact on the budget because of new requirements in that area. And then staffing, retaining, recruiting quality staff, and then finally, for me, protect the district's financial position and operational infrastructure. So, funding school districts, I did an interview with the newspaper earlier this week, and they were talking about with the increase in the property values, and how does that impact the school district? And I basically say, it doesn't, because of the way our funding formulas work, you know, as our property values go up and our local revenue goes up, our school foundation, our state foundation school program, revenue goes down. The homestead exemption, they asked how that impacted us, and I said, well, it doesn't. It's great for our citizens, because they will pay less taxes, it's great for, not so great for us, I mean, we don't get any additional money, the state is going to pick up that difference, and we will get the money from the state to pick up the difference out of the state coffers, but both of these things, or neither of these things, impact the district's funds. Ours are basically based on those same, the enrollment, ADA, and our collections, and how rich we are. Now, that will impact us somewhat, as we get richer, as our property values get up, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We get, we do get a larger share, has to come locally, and it does negatively impact some of the allocations that we get. So, looking at those two things, property taxes. The values are determined by the appraisal district, the tax rate, there's two components to the tax rate, our M&amp;O rate and our interest and sinking rate. Our M&amp;O rate is compressed and capped each year, and we have a voter approval election if we go above that. This year, we, you will see a significant decrease in the maintenance and operations rate, because not only was it compressed under the current funding, or school funding legislation, but the summer, the second special session of the legislature also further reduced that tax rate by another 10.7 cents, so you'll see that impact in a few minutes. And then our state foundation school program, state funding formulas are set by the legislature. Sometimes TEA does have to interpret some of the law as it comes out, it's not always clear. Our basic allotment is $6,160, and it's not adjusted for inflation, and there was no change in it in the legislature, at least so far. They are supposed to meet in October again, their call special, another special session, we'll see if we get any additional funding. I don't think it will necessarily impact the current year at this point, but perhaps it'll be additional funding for next year. And the allotments then, as I said, are impacted by enrollments, our average daily attendance, those special populations, of which Waco ISD does get a lot of enrichment revenue because of our special populations, and then the enrichment pennies that we voted for back in 2015, the fall of 2015, and then, again, those property values and wealth. So, let's look at how that ended up. We ended up gaining about 38 students over what we were looking at in June, and these numbers still do not include the waivers that you all approved in, I think it was at the June Board meeting, we have submitted those to TEA, but we won't see the final result of that until we get our, probably our near-final summary of finances in late September. Well, there might be some additional. Patrick Upmore and PMS says this won't be significant, but we should pick up a few more kids there. But 38 was a great gain for us, and as I had said earlier, I was, I went down some, I have not been doing that, and I was not being conservative, so I went down some for next year at that 11,816, but that was when we were 38 students worse off, and so now I have an even bigger gap, so I'm even, like I said, I'm even more conservative now. Hopefully, we will make that 11,816. So, as you can see, that is, was an 86.2% attendance rate, and I had used right at that 86.3 when I was developing the revenue estimates, before it was about 85 something that we were looking at last time, and so I think we're on target, at least with that attendance rate. I'm hoping it will still continue to increase, since it was about 85 something, it's gone to 86, which will also, again, help us out financially. This is what those, those attendance, average daily attendance looks like for the district. As you can see, we've got some numbers in there, we had some hold harmless, and I have made note of what those hold harmless amounts were in the agenda, so you can kind of see those years and where they held as harmless, and what those numbers were before and after. So, this, I'm not gonna really go through this in great detail, these are just other student counts, if you want to look at them, these are the other drivers of funding for the district, and I kind of show you what those numbers are. A lot of them I have left flat for this coming year, again, trying to be a little conservative. Some of them, where I knew that there would be a direct impact, such as our comp ed, which is more of a headcount, I went ahead and did a sort of a ratio adjustment on those. One area we know that there is growth in is in special education, so I did increase those based on our trends for special ed. Early childhood is another one that, based on the actual students that we have enrolled in those grade levels, which we get that funding from kinder through third grade, I did do a ratio adjustment there. Now, let's look at our local property taxes and our proposed tax rates. So, this is what the, our certified values were, $9.2 billion. That is net taxable adjustment of $1.7 billion. It's 15.6% less than what our preliminary values were, and it's about a 4%, wait, wait, okay, let me go back, let me go back. God, you're lying in there this year. Okay, so, our preliminary values were $10.9 billion. They came out to this 9.9 certified values. This is at $40,000. Above the red line is at $40,000, so that's gonna be comparable between years. And so, we lost about a billion dollars from our certified, from our preliminary to our certified. That was the 12.18% increase that I think has been published in the paper. So, below the red line, what you see is what it looks like with a $100,000 homestead exemption. So, our values go from the 9.9 billion, our taxable value, down to $9.2 billion. That, then, is only a 4% growth over last year for taxable value. We have been required, even though this has to go to the voters in November to vote on the homestead exemption, our tax rate from, the first part of our tax rate was calculated based on a $40,000 homestead exemption, the latter part of our tax rate, as you will see what we're proposing and what we're gonna have to adopt, our maximum rate we can adopt is based on a $100,000 homestead exemption. So, we're just presuming that nobody's gonna vote against a $100,000 homestead exemption. So, that, so anyways, so that's, that is that bottom line that you see there is with that $100,000 homestead exemption. And this is kind of, looks like our 10-year trend for property values, you can see the rate of increase, particularly in the last few years, on how much our property values have increased in this area. This is the impact of that $100,000 homestead exemption. At 40,000, the homestead exemption in total was $569 million, and at 100,000, it will be $1.3 billion. For the net taxable value, again, is that $9.2 billion. The freeze taxable value at this point is $620 million, so it gives us a freeze-adjusted taxable of $8.6 billion, and the net taxable that's still under ARB review when they certified the values was about $104 million. That's a little bit less than it has been the last couple of years. So, if the voters approve the constitutional amendment in November, the homeowners will see an additional $60,000 increase in their homestead exemption, and the total impact on the district is a decrease in net taxable value, that's $723 million. So, here's our other effective tax rate assumptions. We have new value, new market value in the district of $179 million. The new taxable value of the district is about $169 million. The count of homestead residences went up some this year, last year actually had gone down, but it went up some this year, from 13,791 to 14,243. You can see there was a significant increase, again, in the average market value, from $216,000 to $233,000, and then the average homestead residences went from 84,000 to So, there's a huge increase in the value of homestead residences. So, and the average, but because of that $100,000 exemption, the average taxable went from 132 down to 96,000. Sometimes I wonder if they bump it up, because they're gonna do this big homestead exemption sort of on my own notice. Okay, maintenance and operations tax rate, this is what it looks like. So, last year, our M&amp;O rate was 94.29 cents, and this is basically the calculation to get down to our maximum compressed rate, that we have to get down to, under state law, if you look at that, that's in red, that's the reduce, it was, that's reduced by an additional, as I said earlier, 10.7 cents in that special session, that we had, the second special session, and so, our, then we add that, that's, so that's our maximum compressed rate, but then we get to keep our enrichment pennies. So, we have 8 cents in golden pennies that, from that 2015 election, and we have 5.83 cents in copper pennies still. So, with those added into the 62.8 cents, we are now at 76.6 cents for our M&amp;O tax rate. And considering, you know, just probably 10 years or so ago, we were probably close to $1.50, but we're not, so our M&amp;O rate is decreased by 17.65 cents, just on the M&amp;O side.
I think that's worth saying again, right? Because that's for the taxpayers, right?
Decrease in the M&amp;O tax rate of 17.65 cents. State's gonna pick it up for us. Interest and sinking tax rate, we did expect this to go up, because we did issue two more rounds of debt, 80 million and 75 million, and so, we were kind of expecting this to go up, but we had that significant, the 12% increase in our values, but then, with that $100,000 homestead exemption, that would negatively impact on the debt service side, except, the state is also helping us out there, because they do have a hold harmless amount on the debt service side as well for increased homestead exemption. So, that, you see down, kind of in the middle of the page, that state aid received for paying principal and interest on bonds, that was about 270,000 this last year, is 2.4 million for next year. So, that also helped us bring our debt service rate down. So, our debt service rate for this coming year is 26.2 cents. That's a decrease of about 3.7 cents, so our total combined rate will be $1.28587. Total decrease of 21, over 21 cents in our tax rate, or 17.2% decrease in the tax rate.
Now, I, like Cheryl, remember when it was $1.50, and that was around 2006, I believe, before they compressed the tax rate then.
Well, we never got to the $1.50, even though I kept telling the-
Oh, you weren't there, yeah. I was at the $1.50 in my prior district, but, yeah, it's always good when it goes down for the taxpayers. That's worth celebrating.
So, again, this is just a graphic illustration of what's happened with the tax rates, and you can see that-
Oh, yeah, you were a dollar-
-it's happened over the last 20 years or so, that it has, and over the last five years, it has gone down significantly over the years. So, this is me, this picture's me with-
[laughing]
That's what I felt like by the end of, I spent last week what I called scrubbing the budget, going through every line item and looking, and if you hadn't spent it, it got cut. Okay, so, our general fund revenues, this is what the revenue picture looks like. So, we're going to be on our local property tax collections because of the increased homestead exemption, we'll see a decrease of about $12.4 million there. Our other local revenue, interest rates are great right now, they have kind of saved us in a lot of ways this past year. We're gonna be up about almost $2 million there, and like I said, that's pretty much strictly from the increase in interest earnings. Our state foundation school program will be up, basically, that offset that you're seeing in the local property values, we're gonna pick up in state revenue. Now, remember, we were really scheduled to lose money because of our enrollments being and ADA being down, but the one thing that is still in place under our state funding formulas was something that, you know, give a plug for the Equity Center, they actually got it put in place in the last legislative session, where there was some inflation factor for those golden pennies. And fortunately, we had golden pennies, we have the maximum amount of, we have those 8 cents in golden pennies, so we're seeing $4 million off of those golden pennies, and otherwise, we would really be in bad shape if we didn't get that $4 million. So, that, that was very fortunate for us, because we're one of the few, the few districts that do have that kind of enrichment tax rate, that did see some additional revenue there. We have some, just small decreases, teachers, on-behalf payments, our indirect cost recovery, I, that's an estimate that that might be down, because we're spending down some of those federal funds, that's what we get, we get about 10%, well, no, for, most of the federal funds, we get somewhere around 4%, but the ESAR funds, we were able to get an unrestricted indirect cost rate, which was more in 10% to 11% range. With spending those down, I think that revenue will go down some, but we still have a lot of ESAR III money to spend, so hopefully not too much. Our Medicaid reimbursements have continued to increase, and then our other, I made a note on this one, because it looks like our other district federal programs went down a lot, however, last year, we had, we thought we were going to do some E-rate projects out of the general fund, so we had revenue budgeted and expenditures budgeted, but we ended up doing some of those out of ESAR instead, so that, a lot of that revenue wasn't really real, nor was the expenditure on the expenditure side, so, because we did that with ESAR. Then, the very bottom line down there, I show that aid to contract with and to operate the district campuses. This is our Transformation Zone schools, the 1882, and you can see that has gone down the last three years, but it's gone down even more so, because when we started with the 1882 schools, we were getting over $3 million in additional aid, but that has continued to go down. In 2019, with HB3, they changed the funding calculation for the 1882 campuses from a small and mid-sized allotment that actually increased your basic allotment to a small and mid-sized allotment. So, that allotment is very much impacted by us getting richer. As we get richer, that allotment goes down as well. So, we have lost significantly, it looks like this coming year, it'll only be about one, one and a half million dollars, so about half of what we originally started with. Looking, just the overview of the general fund and the impact on the general fund, salary increases, cost us, cost the general fund, now, we talked about the 3.9 million, but this is just general fund, these are positions in general fund, it's 3.4 million, we had adjustments of over pay range minimum of 470,000, and then we had a reduction for projected salary savings, because every year I do go in and I look at each employee group to see kind of what those salary savings are, so I don't budget salaries, especially for certain groups, we have a high turnover in instructional aides, in custodial, food service, so I don't budget those at 100%, that's about $3 million. So, the actual impact of that salary increase we gave was really only 845,000 in budget, if you will. Our benefit rate increases, we are not increasing our contribution to group health this year, because we are much higher than most of the districts that we've looked at, teacher retirement also, from the 2019 legislation, there was a multi-year increase in teacher retirement, that's about 3.3% for this coming year. Utilities, we talked a little bit about that last time, about some surcharges for electricity to fix the grid, that was almost half a million dollars, and then our other insurance liability and property, not quite as much as I originally had thought, because we did, we had a second payment last year to buy down our deductible, and I hadn't taken that into consideration last time, but still over $200,000. Our tax collection fees for the appraisal district and tax office, they're getting 5% raise, $121,000. Security and Mont, now, this is what the legislature did do for us- Security and now, this is what the legislature did do for us. Security and monitoring services, another half million there that we're going to have to put into. And this is really just for the staffing. We didn't really put anything else in the budget at this time, except for the staffing. And then special education services, the one thing that is growing ADA-wise, if you will, is our special education services. And we are required under federal law, maintain effort for those programs on a per student basis. So as those populations grow, we have to put more money on a per student basis into it.
Remember, we were low on special ed back in 2019. I think it was eight, I don't think Charlotte's here, it was eight or nine percent. Like eight to nine percent of our students were being served. And that was pretty low. And I think we're over 11% now. We may be higher, yeah. But it's, there's been a lot of growth in that department.
So here's the bank. So the beginning fund balance was 52.2 million dollars. That's total fund balance. That's not unassigned fund balance. That was a total fund balance. So it looks like our revenues are going to total 157.6 million. Again, local, 73.4. A state program will be 65 million. Federal program, about 5.5 million. And this is just, again, just general fund because we do probably get 30 or 40 million federal funds in our special revenue funds. So our expenditures over revenues at that point are $4 million. And then we do have in some of those programs that we talked about earlier, those other budgets you adopted particularly, the day school for the deaf, guama, and guaca. They do make Challenge Academy pay for itself. But we do have, we do transfer another $565,000 over to make those funds whole because we can't leave them in a deficit situation. So the expenditures over uses and expenditures and uses over revenues and resources is 4.6 million dollars. Very close to what we talked about before. I said when we did the salary increase, it would probably be about 4 million. With the police coming in, that's the difference right there. And so that would give us an ending fund balance of, yeah, that number's wrong.
Forty-eight.
Yes. Forty-eight. Sorry, it's on the other sheet. Anyway, so gives us about 40.
Seven and a half.
Million dollars. So here it is on this sheet. We'll come in there, that green column, that just basically shows you what our audited actuals were, 21, 22, what the 22 is looking to be, and what I think we're going to end up with. As you can see, one of the things that is going to be a little bit better, even though we're drawing down the fund balance, we've two years in a row. I actually think, what am I showing, about 3 million drawing down this year. I think it could possibly be end up about 2 million. We have turned in our final documents, finished those hail damage, those HVAC projects for the hail damage and turned those in. If we get that prior to the end of the year, it's going to be about $800,000. So we might be closer to a $2 million deficit, which is much better than the four we started out with. But at the same time, I think our reserves are going to be a little bit better off too because last year we had much higher reserve, restricted amounts, committed funds. We had, still had some major end of Paul Tyson. The, I don't want to mention the cooler freezer project that was going forever. So our unassigned fund balance isn't being hit quite as much as our total fund balance is. So that's a good thing. One of the things I would like to mention, though, is that part of that debt, the 4.6 million that we're drawing down, about 1,700 of that is in the zone. They're drawing down their fund balance. And they have a restricted fund balance at the beginning of the year of about 2.5 million. So they're drawing down some of that fund balance to fund their budgets for this year as they're losing some of this money, this extra money they're getting. So with that, we have talked about what it looks like going forward there. If, that's about 1,500 and a half, and the administrative costs there are about 1,500 as well. So it's kind of a wash. Anyway, that is 1,700 of the deficit that we're looking at right now. So this is basically the history of our unassigned fund balances. I said, still going down, but still in a healthy, not, or not too unhealthy range. Not as good as I'd like it to be. But, you know, if we drop below 20%, our board policy says we have to come up with a plan to bring it back up. And let's hope the legislature comes up with a plan to help us bring it back up. So then let's look at, very quickly, these other board adopt. The child nutrition program funds, it's, we are trying to spin that down. We have an excess fund balance in child nutrition programs. But with the vacancy rate that we've had in child nutrition of not, you know, we can't keep staff, the supply chain issues of ordering equipment that doesn't come in. We just are having a hard time spinning it down. So we started out with a, or we're starting out, it looks like we're going to have a 5.6 projected fund balance in food service. And we are, just with what we have now with no big equipment purchases, it looks like we're going to draw it down about 300,000, which gives us an ending fund balance of 5.4 million. I'm still hoping that some of that equipment's going to come in and it will end up being a little bit less because that's a 47.5% fund balance. So it's 2.5 million higher than what we're supposed to have. So we're trying, like I said, we are trying very hard to spin that money down, but have not been real successful. Debt service fund, we had a $5 million fund balance. It looks like we're going to have a $5 million fund balance at the end of this year. Started out with about 4.5. We actually made money again because of, a lot of it's because of interest earnings that we were actually earning money on our investments that we had before, a little bit higher collections. Our debt expenditures will be 25.9 million for this coming year. So we will be drawing down that fund balance. Part of what happens, as you see up there, we have local revenue coming in of 23 million. Here's where we have this, this 2.4 million that's coming in for our hold harmless. Gives us about 25.9 million dollars. So we'll draw the fund balance down a little bit. But we had excess tax collections last year, the way that the city measures that. So we are required to draw down the fund balance slightly. And that's, we were talking a little bit about how we could maybe build the fund balance up and pay a debt off early in preparation for a new bond election in a year or two. But that's going to be a little bit harder, I think, under current law. But anyway, it ends up being a 17.2% fund balance. Our outstanding debt after we issued all of those bonds is 453 million dollars. Here's our other special revenue funds. These are those other budgets that I talked about that we adopt. I did break out the Greater Waco Advanced Academies into the Healthcare Academy and the Manufacturing Academy. Challenge Academy, as I said, the revenues and expenditures break even. We did lower our rates because we've got a rather significant fund balance in the Challenge Academy. We don't really want to keep a big fund balance in Challenge Academy. Or it's actually, it doesn't show us a fund balance, it shows us deferred revenues down at the bottom. And so it's not a big program, so 450,000 is more than we need. We did lower the rates for all the districts a little bit this year. And still should probably come close to breaking even in that fund. And then the day school for the deaf, that, as I said, we're the fiscal agent on. We did do a little shift in this program this past year. If you look at last year's budget, we were actually having to transfer quite a bit more money there. We have been allowed, or we have been in the past, taking those expenditures for the day school for the deaf as part of our maintenance of effort in special ed. And this year, TEA disallowed that. So we actually moved some positions equal to that dollar amount that we were transferring before. We moved it to help with our maintenance of effort requirement in the general fund this past year. So we only need to, last year, if you looked at this number, instead of the half million that we need to transfer, it was more like, oh, it was over a million dollars. So this is an improvement over that. So we're going to be transferring 260,000 to guaca, 180,000 for guama, and then this 124, the day school for the deaf. Those are the budgets. So future budget issues. Still have continued declines in enrollment. I was doing some work on some projections out for out years this week. One of the things that we do is we look at birth data in our zip codes. And then how many of those, five years later, enroll in our kindergarten? That has gone for about three years. It used to be closer to about 85%. For about three years there, it was sort of in the 70% last. For this kindergarten class that we're in right now, it was 67%. So part of those zip code include Robinson area, that's 706, I think it is. Anyway, so we are losing some kids there. But almost worst news is that there was about 1,500 births that went into this year's, 1,500 births this year. And it's, we've got a couple of years, it's only dropping a little bit, like 1493 and then 14, then it drops COVID year, it's like 1,300 kids. So people weren't having babies during COVID. So we have a couple hundred pre-K kids. We'll probably see some loss in about three years from now. Anyway, so then the proposed budget, again, we are exceeding the revenues by 4.6 million. There's still inflation and other cost drivers, particularly healthcare costs. We're going to be having to look at something different, I think, there that we've been talking about. Keeping our salaries and benefits competitive to continue to be able to recruit quality teachers and other staff. And then we haven't done a lot in capital asset replacements like buses. So we're going to have to eventually, that's going to become a critical need. And then the ESAR funding ending, again, September 30th of 2024. We currently have 6.3 million in salary and benefit costs that are funded in ESAR. Okay. And so that's going to be an issue that we're going to, about a million of those people are in dyslexia positions that we had moved, and about 1.1 million are in library staffing. And for three years, our technology purchases, this is going to be another big issue for us because our technology purchases have been done from federal funds over the last three years. And so we're going to have, Jerry says it's going to be about a million dollars a year to really, for us to pick that up. And then as far as interventions for instruction and social emotional learning, there's a lot of ESAR funds that are dedicated to, in those areas. So we'd have to figure out whether we can continue them or not with the loss of the funds.
Add something there. If the legislature approves pre-K for teachers, could you speak to what that would mean to us, Mrs. Davis?
Well, basically, for pre-K.
Teacher kids, excuse me.
We only get halftime funding for eligible students. So if a teacher's, if a teacher wants to bring their pre-K child into the district, then I think under the law, they're going to become eligible. So we would still get halftime funding. Halftime funding is 61.60 for, pop does not get us a teacher and aide for the pre-K classroom, even at 20 kids, and their attendance is not great. So it would not pay for itself even if we do get the funding for that. So that's going to just be, you know, and the space could be an issue as well.
It may have some increased costs, although it's a nice, will be a nice benefit for employees. And I absolutely think the state should fund that for teachers' children. But there'll be some costs to us if that happens.
And part of what we do right now, we do fund half of the teacher and some of the aides with that early childhood allotment we get, but they don't generate the funds. The funds are generated in kinder through third grade. So the pre-K kids don't generate funds, even though that's where we spend the money. So that won't, you know, that increase in students there won't generate that early childhood allotment. So this is our meeting to propose the budget. We will post the notice this weekend, I think tomorrow maybe. And then we have the budget and tax rate meeting. We have, these things all go together. We do the public hearing right before the board meeting. And then we'll have agenda items to adopt the budget and tax rate on that August 24th meeting. And then September 1 is the first day of our fiscal year. So budgets will be rolled out for that. I got a little, what is it called, the hotspot or whatever from Jerry today because I'm going to be in Riosso, and I'm going to be pushing out budgets from the mountains. So not quite sure if I'm going to have Wi-Fi, so anyway.
And well deserved, well deserved. We have some significant challenges ahead. We really are needing our legislature to do something for us. And we were hopeful that there will be another special session and that there's some help. But we don't know. Politics don't feel like they're in our favor, but we're going to wait and see. But we've got, we'll have big decisions to make about budgets next year. Getting leaner.
Next item. Yes, I believe you have the next item. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Davis, you can continue. Item number four.
Okay, so the one action that we need to take tonight is to set the date, which will be August 24th, for that public hearing and the time where we will adopt the tax rate and budget, and then to accept that proposed tax rate. I do have one correction from what's in your packet. We, I didn't get this back from the tax office in time to change out that sheet. But our guru, Omar Garcia, did make a mistake in the template, so we had to recalculate. It happens a lot, believe me. We had to recalculate the notice, just a tiny section in the notice. So on that sheet, down kind of the middle of the notice where it has that amount that is the comparison of the proposed rates with last year's tax rates. And what you see next on the 24th will be correct. But on that second line where it says the rate to maintain the same level of maintenance and operations revenue, it should be the maintenance and operations tax rate should be 7.71943, which is a little higher than what it was showing. The interest and sinking is 0.29108 for a total rate of 1.01051. And then the total revenue per student would have been 7,306. And the state revenue per student was 5,786. The notice is going in the paper, has already been corrected, so it will be right. He just forgot to send me a copy of it, so I couldn't get it in your agenda.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion. Yeah, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the notice of the public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate for 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Setting the proposed tax rate, date, time, place for the public meeting at August 24, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Waco ISD Administrative Building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guillory. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant? Mr. Vedanya? Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa? And Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis. Okay, we will move on to item number five. Mrs. Barera, consider, discuss, and. Mrs. Barretta, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding allowance expenditure authorization, number nine for Waco High.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kinkanen, members of the board. So this agenda item is basically approval of an AEA or allowance expenditure authorization. It's a little bit of a different situation because usually when we're doing that, we're actually spending more money. In this case, what we're doing is reconciling sort of a negative allowance we set up for ourselves when GMP number two was approved by the board in September of 2022. We knew we still had some ground to cover to bring the project in budget, and we had some really good ideas, big places we could do that, but we needed to move forward in order to keep our schedule going, and so we moved forward with that. So I'm happy to report that we achieved the goal and that we have, you know, identified all of those savings. And I think I have a slide that can show, that I just want to kind of refresh your memory what we did, our big, the big pieces we did. So we did consolidate the classroom layout, changed it a little bit to just make it more efficient and have less exterior wall. We shifted the building over, which would allow us to have a single phase of construction for Waco High School, and we wouldn't be moving some kids in and some kids out and having sort of the Rubik's Cube thing going on. The other thing we did that was major was we moved a central utility plant, which used to be right against, right next to Trice, right next to the building. So that cut down on hundreds of feet of underground pipe, insulated pipe, all that sort of thing. Sounds, doesn't sound like that big a deal, but it's a big deal. Lots of conductors, electrical conductors, much smaller distances. In addition to that, there were a lot of, of value management ideas that the team came up with, over 100 different ideas that Rogers O'Brien and O'Connell Robertson and, and Waco ISD evaluated over this period of time. So it took a lot of hard work to get there, but, but the team got there, and we have, we're going to have a beautiful building, and we are, we achieved our budget goal, so.
Okay. Yep, very great news. It's always nice to see on paper that, what was that, over $8 million, 8.4 million savings? Great. Sorry, so I will entertain a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Mr. Vedania?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No, I just want to say thank you and encourage you to do all the brainstorming like this that you.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, Ms. Barretta. Thank you so much for that 8.4 million is not an easy feat, and so I really appreciate all the work that you and your team have done.
Huge.
Yeah, huge savings. Thank you. And we will move on to item number six, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding approval of allowance expenditure authorization, number 10, for Waco High.
Okay, well, similar situation, only a little different. This is, this AEA or allowance expenditure authorization addresses changes to the civil plans, so that is the concrete paving, drainage, underground utilities, all that sort of thing. Some of it is, had to do with the building shift that was taking place, but it wasn't totally finalized until later after the previous one was done, and it was also developed after the city review. So while the city of Waco reviews the plans and they have other requirements that they may want us to incorporate in order to suit their system plan, and so some of that is city requirements. This allowance expenditure item of 114,614.48 will come out of the owner's contingency. As you recall, in our contract, we have owner's contingency set up for expenditures like this. You can't predict every single thing that's going to come up, so this one is covered in that, and it will not increase or decrease the project cost or schedule.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the allowance expenditure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Sorry, do we have any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Barretta, and you're here still for one more.
Still here for one more.
Okay. And item number seven, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding allowance expenditure authorization, number five, for Tennyson Middle School.
Okay, so when Core's contract was approved back in November of 2022, it had a, it also had a deductive value engineering allowance. Even though when we took the Carver plans and, and we, when they were, you know, revised and updated to, to suit Tennyson, just some minor changes, we did our best to incorporate every lesson that we possibly learned in Carver, to make sure that we really included anything that we, you know, might have overlooked the first time around. So we, but we thought there still could be some things that we could get more efficient on. So we set up this 582,000 deductive allowance with Core in their contract, and so that's what, what we were working to. So since then, since November, Core's been working on hitting that number and looking for other, you know, cost reduction items, and to their credit, they came up with 867,308. So they actually overshot that, that goal, which means that we get to have 285,308,000 cost savings to the project, which is going to go into our owner's contingency allowance. And then we can use that to offset the cost of future alternates or things we, we might need to do at Tennyson to make sure it's on, that has the same facilities and everything as Carver. So that's pretty good news there.
Great news. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move we take appropriate action regarding this allowance expenditure for Tennyson.
Great, so Mr. Patton is making a motion to approve the allowance expenditure authorization, five, AEA, to reconcile cost reductions and authorize superintendent execute the AEA. I heard a second from Mr. Vedania. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Just curious, where did they find the savings?
A bunch of different things, a bunch of different things. I mean.
Are there any just major ones? I mean, if it's, you know, $100 here, $100 there, we're not interested, but the big ones we.
The list on the, in the package?
I mean, it could be like changing, yeah, there's some things in the package here that, that list it, but it's just changing maybe the type of grout from one type to another that really doesn't change the performance, all kinds of, I mean, this was like going through the couch cushions.
No, I appreciate, I know it takes a lot of work to really find.
Yeah. And, you know, and to the credit of the local, the local contractors we're working with, a lot of them, you know, have been very forthcoming with ways to reduce the cost. They know that the district, it's important to the district, so.
Please pass on our appreciation.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Barretta, for all your hard work, and I agree with Mr. Ochoa, please give him our thanks for that cost savings. Okay, number eight announcements. It was a great morning.
Good evening, yes. You stole words right out of my mouth. Great to see you all again after we spent the morning together celebrating. I think it was Trustee Grant that said he hadn't seen many of us laugh quite as hard as we did. I specifically called out Dr. Kinkanen, but we, it was truly tremendous to gather together for convocation and laugh and celebrate some really impressive results and share those with our team. So thank you all for being there. So just in the next week, Meet the Teacher events are underway as we speak, as President Cordewig noted. Last night, we had middle school, tonight was elementary, and tomorrow night is our high school's turn. This is all ahead of our first day of school, Monday, August 14th. It'll be an exciting Monday. I want to remind you that we are, you are invited this weekend to GW Carver on Saturday to join in supporting teachers and staff as they continue to move into the facility and also join us for lunch around 11:00. The Carver staff will be doing a scheduled distribution and celebration with those families shortly thereafter. We will again see all of your faces at GW Carver next Thursday night for the annual board training. You do have a reading assignment, a little bit of homework, if you haven't picked up a copy of your book.
Thank you for the reminder.
Please talk with Renee or I.
Yes, if you need a book, let us know. I have a few copies upstairs.
And, and that board training will start at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, great. Lots of exciting stuff. We will go into closed session, Waco ISD's will now go into closed session at 7:06 pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551.072, 551.071, and 551.076. No action will be taken when we come back, so you're welcome to leave. The board, we entered its closed session at 8:22, and we are adjourned.